We're ready to go. Good evening and welcome to our city council meeting this evening. We'd like to excuse Mayor Blad. He is on city business out of the area. The city will be safe once again at 12:00 midnight tonight when he returns. I am so grateful for an outstanding staff that has kept things going the last three days while the mayor's been away. But let's begin. Let's have a roll call, please. Shawnee.
Adamson.
Here.
Bray.
Here.
Cheatham.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Lurick.
Here.
Manon.
Here.
Blad.
If you'll all stand, please. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance followed by an invocation that will be offered by Pastor Brian Griffin representing the Pocatello Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bless pray. Father God, we come before you this night, Lord, and we want to thank you and praise you, Lord, for these men and women who selflessly give their time, Lord, to serve our community, Lord. And we pray, Lord, that as you are the grantor of wisdom, Lord, that you would give wisdom to them, that they may have wisdom and knowledge and application of these things to help further direct our city. And, Lord, we just thank you for the blessings of the nation we live in, of the state we live in, and this city we live in. We just thank you for this time now and ask for your blessings upon these meetings in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Counsel, you have before you the consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. Item eight, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the July 1st, 2019 City Council Executive Session and the July 9th, 2019 City Council Executive Session. Treasurers' report.
Good evening, counsel. Ashley Welsh, Deputy CFO. I am here to give the treasurer's report for the month of June 2019. Total cash equivalents of cities' monies totaled $50,191,066. Total long-term investments were $4,853,329 for a total of $554,394. This amount is down $325,657 for the month of June. On page two of the report, we have highlighted key receipts for the month. The airport received grants in the amount of $26,287. We received $53,455 from ISU for the municipal services agreement. Transit received grants, federal grants, for May of 2019 for $100,088, and we received the Idaho State Liquor Tax for $126,294, which was down 5.29% from the previous year.
Ashley, one question relative to the ISU Municipal Services Agreement. That is for a year's service?
Correct.
In arrears or in advance?
You know what? I am not sure on that one.
Would you find out for me eventually?
Yeah, I will.
Thank you.
Okay, the remaining section details the net change in cash and long-term investments for the city. And then page three of the report is for trust funds. Trust funds have a total cash and cash equivalent of $128,919. Total long-term investments of $3,862,489 for a total cash, cash equivalents, and long-term investments of $4,891,408. Total cash receipts for the month were $29,562, and total cash disbursements were $51,233. The net change in long-term investments was $26,937 for an overall decrease in the trust funds of $48,608. The next page shows all the funds' cash balances with their respective net change for the month. You can see the general fund is still in a healthy position at $10,773,000. Page five is discussion and analysis for your review. And lastly, we have the five-year trend of cash balances. This report continues to reflect a very strong cash position for the city. I'll go over the negative cash balances. Transit Urban Fund has a negative cash balance of $510,284 pending receiving of grants, so that money will come in. Debt Service Fund has negative $21,783, which will come from future tax remittance, which we should be receiving within the next week or two. And then CDBG is negative $178,802, and that is pending grants receivable. Are there any questions?
Yes. I'd like to refer to the updates you gave us on the Budget Execution Progress Report.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not too concerned about the expenses. They seem to be close. I'm concerned about the revenue projections. There are a number of those that are way off scale for 75% of the budget year being gone. An example is animal licenses, only 41% of projection. There's a number of others: sales tax revenue share, liquor tax, highway distribution fee, rec center, or cemetery charges. I'm wondering, are these normal for this time of year, or should we be concerned about the lack of revenue?
I'm not. The animal one I noticed was, did seem a little bit low. The rest of them are quarterly payments, and so sometimes, you know, we might see we'll be under for a while, and then once we get those payments, they'll come back up. Like the state, the revenue sharing is quarterly.
The library fund is 64% of expectation, over 75% through the year.
And I think a lot of the business for some of those comes in the summer months also. So that's just through June, that execution report. So we can, we can look at it again after July, and if we want to maybe meet with the departments, we can do that.
I'm just wondering if we could see some kind of a, of a similar report for years past to see whether this is typical for this time of year. If it is, then it's nothing to be concerned about.
I can get you last year's June report. Would you like?
That would be perfect.
I think I can email it to you. Okay?
One other item that we talked about earlier. I would like to, we would like to have some differentiation in terms of how it's determined that certain employees have P cards and others do not.
Okay, I can get that.
We're in our next study session. If we could have that, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Ashley.
Yes.
Appreciate you very, very much. You have a very hard job. Human Relations Advisory Committee reappointment. Counsel may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment, reappointment of Gloria Mayer to continue her service as a member of the Human Relations Advisory Committee. Ms. Mayer's term will begin August 8th, 2019, and will expire August 8th, 2023. Item D, ratification and agreement, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Counsel may wish to ratify the execution of a landowner agreement between the City of Pocatello and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Subject to legal department's review, the service provided are in support of the Portniv River Vision, including the creation of a canoe trail and associated public outreach and wildlife habitat improvements. There is no cost to the city for the agreement.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counsel Cheatham.
I move for approval of the consent agenda, consent agenda item number three.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Shawnee, would you please call the roll?
Cheatham.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Manon.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes. Under Communications, we do have one proclamation that will be read by Counselwoman Adamson.
Whereas on April 11th, 1946, representatives of the United Kingdom's Air Training Corps, ATC, welcomed a proposal for an air cadet exchange plan made by the Air Cadet League of Canada, ACLC, and it was agreed to submit an official proposal on both sides of the Atlantic. And whereas, an invitation to the United States was accepted by the Civil Air Patrol, CAP, National Commander in 1947, followed by similar invitations to countries including Sweden, Norway, Netherlands, and Denmark for reciprocal exchanges in the early 1950s. And whereas, when at the same time, the United States launched an expansion of its exchange program involving 19 countries, it became apparent an overall exchange effort was needed, the International Air Cadet Exchange Association, IACE, was established. And whereas, the IACE promotes an interest in aviation and space, including highlighting career opportunities and the global nature of aerospace manufacturing, and whereas, the IACE provides cadets an insight into the essential interdependence of nations and shares the values of cultural diversity, character development, and the potential of all young people to better themselves. Therefore, Brian Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, does hereby proclaim July 30th, 2019, to be Civil Air Patrol Air Cadet Exchange Day.
Here to receive this is Colonel George Brusheers. Colonel, we want to congratulate you and the cadets on this. I present this to you, and please make any comments that you desire.
Thank you. City Council, I'm glad I could be back in front of you guys. I wanted to first start with a thank you. About a year ago next month, we came to you and requested a lease agreement for a little building out the airport. And if you've ever had the opportunity, we're actually working on an opportunity to get you guys out there. Our nights that we meet are the same nights that you meet, so we have to work something out. We spent a lot of time, a lot of money out there, and it's a total transformation of the place. You know, it was kind of a 1940s bomber base with vaults and spider webs and stuff like that. And now when you go in there, it's actually a classroom. It's set up for a meeting room, classroom, communications area, and a command area. We were able to secure a grant from INAL for $5,000, which in reality gave us about $10,000 worth of stuff when we had the purchasing power through some of our members. We were able to get laptops and STEM equipment so that we can actually train these cadets in, not just your average STEM on how to make airplanes, but on how to program and code for computers, oscilloscopes, meters, and things that they normally don't get their hands on. And they want to say thank you. We've had cadets that have graduated. The pastor here was talking about one of his members that was one of our cadets with the exchange program. He's actually going to Australia next week as one of our U.S. members, going over there to find out how they do things. I'm really jealous. They get to fly in, rescue helicopters, and go shark surfing and fun stuff in Australia. But I wanted to say thank you for that opportunity, invite you to come out and do that. It looks a lot different now with plants and flowers, and the building looks great. On the proclamation, again, I'd like to thank you. My official title, I'm no longer Wing Commander for the State of Idaho. I'm one of the eight representatives for the, for the corporation as a legislative member. So it's nice to come back to a friendly government, being in the Capitol. I put in for combat pay for working up the dome. If you guys have watched a little bit of TV, you know what I'm talking about. It's dangerous. Things are flying around and stuff there. So it's nice to come home to a friendly government that actually is a working government. The organization right now, we have 18 member countries. And some of these countries would not be considered, if you look at the front page, friendly countries. China, for example. Last year, the Rocky Mountain region, in particular Idaho, won the bid to bring these cadets to our state and to our local communities. So we had 18 of these kids, I'm sorry, 30 of the kids last year come into Idaho from New Zealand, Great Britain, Germany. We had cadets from China. We brought these kids in, and they were blown away by how nice people were. We start them out, we bring them into Washington, D.C. They spend a week there. They get to look at monuments and statues and see what the U.S. government is and how we run. It's kind of scary now that they see it. Then we split them up into half. Half goes to the East Coast, half goes over to the West. Again, we won this bid. We bring them here. A&W Root Beer is making root beer floats for them. The guy from China was like, "No, my kid can't have beer." We give him a root beer float, their eyes get really big, makes great photos. But my point is that you guys are doing a great thing in our community, and it really makes us proud and feel safe to bring these kids from all over the world here to your community and to turn them loose. When they, when they walk around and they meet people, they walk into Walmart, you know, which blows their mind because you can buy guns in a grocery store. But we take them through these different things. Idaho is actually kind of a pit stop. It's where they get to stop and play volleyball and hang out with each other and do fun things. For example, Colorado's taking them whitewater rafting, fun stuff like that. We get them up in Montana, we're flying them over the national park, Yellowstone National Park, where they get to see this from the air. Not a lot of airplanes get to fly over that and do that. So you guys are ambassadors, and this is going to go a long way, and we appreciate you. Long story short, thanks, folks.
How many cadets do you have here this evening?
We're down to 12. We have a good high school graduation runoff, and the great thing about that, again, is that one of the things that you guys did was help to bring these people into positions where the cadet actually that is going to Australia, graduated from high school, he's a freshman at ISU, and he gets his opportunity to, to expand his horizons and go on this. But right now, we're down to about 12 cadets, and we're recruiting for more. We're always on the hunt for them.
Which building are you in at the airport?
I think it used to be the old FAA building. It's right in front of the tower. It's that red brick building. It's hard to recognize now. There's no spider webs around it.
Do you have people here tonight that are part of this?
No, no. I get to be alone tonight. They're up at the Idaho Accelerator Center, taking a tour of the lab up there in the Accelerator Center. So fun stuff. So they send the government guy to go do the government side. But again, I thank you.
Thank you very much, Colonel. We have calendar review. Counsel may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. And we do have on July 26th at 12:00 p.m., special city council meeting at the Senior Citizens Center. On August 1st at 9:00 a.m., there will be a special city council meeting. At 5:30 p.m., the council clarification meeting. On August the 1st, 6:00 p.m., regular city council meeting. I'd like to call on our Parks and Recreation Director, John Banks, to share with us the next three items for calendar review.
Thank you. Council President Johnston, council members, John Banks, Parks and Recreation Director. We've got some special events going on the remainder of July out in our parks. On Sunday evenings, the Pocatello Municipal Band will perform their Sunday evening concerts from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. during the month of July at the Lower Ross Park Band Show. And this coming Sunday, July the 21st, is a Western theme, so bring your hats and be there at quarter to seven with something good to eat. Thursday, July the 25th, we have a splash dance at Ross Park Aquatics Complex. This is geared for youth ages 12 to 17 years. From 8:30 to 10:30 p.m., we've got DJ music and a host of other activities for the, for the youngsters. And lastly, on Friday, July the 26th, we're celebrating our 20th anniversary of the Ross Park Aquatics Complex. And from noon to 8:00, we're offering half-price admissions for the community to celebrate the event. There will be all kinds of fun things going on: raffles, bounce houses, money dives for the kids. And for the last two events at Ross Park, everyone, please remember, we have our Ross Park drive-in food that is now available at our brand-new concession building. Thank you.
Thank you, John, very, very much. Reminder that the open burn ban in wildland urban interface areas continues. Adopt a shelter cat, special discounted adoption rate is available through September 30th. Contact the animal shelter for more information, but it's $25 for a cat and $35 for a kitten, and the balance of those fees are being paid for by the friends of our animal shelter. Tom, would you come and announce the next special event for us, please?
Good evening, President and Counsel. Tom Kirkman, the Deputy Public Works Director. We're excited to announce that next week, we're going to have an open house and a ribbon cutting at our new facility at 2405 Garrett Way for the Street Department, the Sanitation Department, and Fleet Services. This has been a fun project that we've been involved in, and we think it's a huge benefit to the city. It's going to allow us to combine two different departments from two different locations into one location, as well as start a third department out of that facility for fleet maintenance program. So we're going to have the chiefs come, the Pocatello Chiefs will do a ribbon cutting at 2:00. And then from 2:00 to 6:00, after that, we will have some tours of the facility. We welcome and invite anybody in the community to come out and take a look.
Thank you very much. We're looking forward to this. Okay, any other calendar items that anyone wants to draw the attention of the audience? Thank you very much. Agenda item number six, final plat, Northgate District, Division 1. Ken Poppy of Portniv Development LLC, mailing address 4990 Valenti Road, Suite H, Chippik, Idaho 83202, represented by Chris Holmes of Creek Hollowan Associates, Incorporated, mailing address 611 Wilson Avenue, Suite 1A, Pocatello, Idaho 83201, has submitted a final plat to subdivide 3.535 acres, more or less, into three lots. The subdivision is to be known as Northgate Division Number 1. What is the pleasure of the group?
Council President, I move that we approve this final plat, subject to all the conditions.
You've heard the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
No, no. We have to do a little.
Oh, I forget what meeting I'm in. Please call the roll.
Bray.
Yes.
Did Manon second?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes. Oh, no. I'm recusing myself. I can't vote on this. I'm sorry. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, let's go to agenda item number seven, golf concession agreement renewal. By the way, counsel, we have now passed, we are no longer going to be the shortest meeting in the history. We've passed the 17-minute record, or 18-minute record that was previously set by a prior administration. Okay, let's go to the golf concession agreement renewal. Counsel may wish to consider approving the revised four-golf concession agreement renewal follow allowing for continued operation of Highland and Riverside Golf Courses through December 31st of 2023.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Counselmember Bray.
I move that we approve the golf concession agreement through December 31st, 2023.
Second.
You've heard the motion and the second. Question?
Yes. Could we have Four Golf talk to us for just a moment?
Sure.
One of you.
Please share with us the successes that we are experiencing at the golf courses, please.
Well, my question is, have you seen this agreement? Do you agree with it? Is it going to work for you guys?
We believe so. Yeah, John has been wonderful to work with, and they come up with some really good ideas to try to make this.
Guys, identify yourself for the TV cameras.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Identify yourself for the TV cameras.
I'm Greg Albright. I'm the General Manager of Four Golf.
And Gerald Meyer, the partner and CFO. CFO, basically, of Four Golf.
So you like this agreement?
Yes. Yep, I think it's going to work out fine.
We think it's fair. We think it kind of maintains that concept of the three-legged stool. It's got to be good for the city. It's got to be good for the concessionaire. It's got to be good for the golfer. We can't increase prices beyond what they are able to afford or what they might pay at some other area course, so we think it's fair. And we, we throw out our thanks to John Banks, who is the Parks and Rec Director, for trying to come up with something that is fair to all.
It's been a wet spring. How has that hurt your play?
It always affects the numbers. When we start out slow, it's really hard to catch up. You know, we have so many nice days through the season, and if you start slow, you're just already behind, and all you can do is the best that you can with what remains of the season.
Okay.
Yeah, we hope to have a good second half of the season, then we catch up.
When you have a tournament taking place there or something like that, how does that affect your income? Is it good or bad when you have a bunch of people playing for a cause like the Rotary Club?
Fundraising tournaments?
Yeah.
Amateur tournaments?
Yeah.
You know, really, both of them are good. When we have a fundraising event, like we just had the John McCarthy out of Riverside, we have a full golf course with a, a lot of times, it's a lot of non-golfers that are playing. They're just, they want to be part of that benefit.
Yeah.
And when that golf course is full, now it's sending all the really daily golfers up to the other golf course, so it's definitely a full golf course as well. And then we've done really well with all of our amateur tournaments, and that's kind of the same, same thing. When one course is full, it ends up filling up the other one. So the weekends have been pretty good, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays.
Anything else, Rick?
No.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any other questions?
You can sell him a senior pass.
Yeah?
Absolutely. Glad to sell any passes.
I enjoyed coming out to the Riverside a while back when we were there. That was, that was very insightful for me, and I'm anxious to see the new clubhouse when that's ready.
Hey, so are we.
Yeah, yeah. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
You've got it. You've heard the motion and the second. A roll call, please.
Bray.
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes. Agenda item number eight, bid contract, Fairground Sanitation Sewer Extension Project. Counsel may wish to consider the recommendation of staff for the following requests regarding the Fairground Sanitary Sewer Extension Project. A, accept the low-responsive bid received June 26th, 2019, from A+ Contractors LLC in the amount of $895,434.70. And if the bid is accepted, B, authorize the mayor's execution of the agreement between the City of Pocatello and A+ Contractors LLC in the amount of $895,434.70 for the Fairground Sanitary Sewer Extension Project, subject to legal department review. Staff recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry. Counsel President Johnston, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number Eight with the, accept the lowest responsive bid and also authorize the mayor's execution of the agreement, subject to legal department review.
You've heard the motion and the second. Is there discussion? All, please call the roll.
Manon?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes. Motion carries. We've reached Agenda Item Number Nine, which is discussion items. This time has been set aside to hear the discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to make any official, take any official action at this meeting on matters brought before under the Agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized, and we have a total allocated amount. Each speaker has three minutes. George, if you'd please come up and make your three-minute presentation, please.
I've been volunteering for cause, Portniv Animal Welfare. Oh, my name is George, by the way. And I've been volunteering for cause, Portniv Animal Welfare, for over 12 years. When I first arrived, I wasn't very familiar with animal welfare at all or whatnot, but I've grown fond of animals, especially cats, because, and these guys here, there's four of them in here, they all owe their existence here to you because of your indifference to the TNR system. I sort of burst your bubble here from all the praise that you've, that you've just received.
Take that home, Rick.
Last year, Best Friends came up here from Canab. I don't know if you're aware of it. They, they offered a $50,000 grant to the, to the shelter to begin a TNR program. TNR programs have been successful, most recently in Idaho Falls, because if you watch TV at all, two or three weeks ago, they surpassed their expectations for decreasing their euthanasia. In a year and a half, they had, I think, four years or three years to do it. They did it in half the time. They received the same $50,000 grant from Canab, you know, Best Friends. They accepted it. Within a year and a half, they reached 96% saving rate, or, you know, non-kill rate. Here, I've got figures here that are startling. From 2014, we have, out of 4,000 admissions into our shelter, nearly 50%. I mean, that's pretty high. That's almost 2,000 kills. And these are who you're killing. These little guys who have, you know, they don't ask for tax deferments, they, you know, they're not asking for political favors, and they won't even be here if it wasn't for the inaction of the council and the city itself to implement a system. And I know it'll work. I mean, I've been working with these guys. My organization, I'm part of it, we spend over 1,000 animals, dogs, cats, a year, at the cost of over $70,000 to us. We don't, all we do is, we spend our money, we get public money, no, or we get private money, but we spend over $150,000 a year as an organization. I mean, you know, that's fine with me, to save these guys. But we get no, and I don't want recognition, but we get no, I don't think you know that. I mean, do you know that? If you do, let me know.
We are aware.
I don't even get a Christmas card from you guys.
I'm sorry. Give me your address, I'll see to it you get one.
Well, okay, but it's like 12 years in arrears, but the thing is, your focus is on growth and on, you know, making, bringing a pipe dream, you know, like bringing Google in here or whatever. And there's a more immediate need for a council, a decision made by the council as quickly as I gave Mr. Pappy here or Mr., what's your name again? Albright? Albright's my boss. But we need a decision made on TNR because that's the root of the problem. Sunday, four days ago, I picked up these four kittens, these are three weeks old, and six kittens that are three days old, this big. You know how these are fed? I have to feed them with a syringe. I have to feed them for nearly two hours with a syringe. Fortunately, I got the little ones off to nursing mothers, but this is from one place, one apartment complex, one part of the apartment complex in the city. I get calls, three, four, five calls a day. I spend six months of the year in Arizona. I get calls down there from Pocatello. My wife and I, my wife is going, you know, she's overboard anyway, she's overwhelmed, but I don't mind doing this. I mean, I really don't mind doing this, but something needs to be done, and you can't wait until November to put out an application for an administrator of the, I know Ron Nap, I've known him, he's a little kid, I know his family, they're very good friends of mine. And I talk very, very candidly with him, he talks very frankly with me. And he says he had so much backup work to do that he's barely getting caught up now. He's been in that office for about four months. I've exceeded my time, I understand, but...
And she gave you three extra minutes. This girl is on your side.
Really, I mean, something needs to be done. I have figures here that you won't believe.
Okay, we're out of time, but what we need to do is get a specific recommendation to Officer Nap, and let's get it in for a discussion. We would like that.
We need a permanent administrator before the end of the year.
We're working on it.
Before, we should have in the summer. This is the busy time.
Yeah, we're working on it.
I've been doing this for a long time, and I do know what I'm talking about. I mean, I've got a lot of time on my hands with a lot of these guys.
And we'd like to visualize. Thank you. Thank you very much for being here, everyone, and we will stand adjourned. Thank you.